City manager, are you there? There you go. Awesome. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to the Dania Beach City Commission Virtual Regular Meeting. Today is June the 8th, 2021, and it is 7:00 PM. Call the roll, please.
Mayor James.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Salvino. Here. Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Oddman.
May I'm here.
City Manager Garcia. City Attorney Ansboro.
Here.
Mayor, if I may, I would like to remind all the panelists to raise your hat, use your raise hand button if you'd like to speak. Thank you.
And can you remind the attendees of how to raise their hands to speak as well?
They need to click on participants, and then there's a button available at the bottom of the screen that comes onto the side. It says raise hand.
Awesome. Thank you. Can we please have a moment of silence? And I would like to add to that moment of silence Coach Washington, who is an elder in our community and an alumni of Addicks High School who passed away this morning. Thank you. Thank you. And can we please stand for the pledge? Delegations to the flag of the United States. Thank you. First, we will have presentations and special event approvals. On the presentation by the Chamber of Commerce has been withdrawn in order to say both the Chamber and the Commission and the city from public discourse and going back and forth because there are a lot of opinions on both ends. And I did not want to have that type of atmosphere and dialogue here. They will not be requesting funds from the city, and we can just move forward without having to have this type of discussion. Commissioner Oddman, is it about this or something else? Because I really, I really don't want to have a discussion about this.
I, I'm, we're not. I'm just, I'm just asking the question, given what you've said, will, what is our, is the city manager, are we going to put it on the next agenda to discuss our, our, our next step?
Yes.
If I may through the mayor, Commissioner Oddman, that's, that's a great question because we're getting ready to provide you with your, your budget by the third week of July. So if, if we put more monies into contingency for mayor and commission, so then you guys could decide and we could take that forty-five or forty thousand and put it in commission contingency. That would be my recommendation now as you start getting into your budget discussions. But that's good because we need to have some guidance because we're going to submit the budget to you in approximately, you know, one month.
All right. So with, with respect for, for requests, for the, for the mayor's request of sort of just moving this along, could we put, however you want to phrase it, next steps for, for what we're going to do on the next agenda so that we can make those decisions?
Yes.
Okay. And then for now, we'll just move along on to whatever our next item is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Juneteenth preamble by Commissioner Lloyd Llewellyn and a presentation by Mr. Emmanuel George.
Okay. Thank you very much. As you all know, we voted to pass the holiday this year of Juneteenth for our, our, our city staff, all of our employees. And we wanted to do something in addition to them just having a day off. We want, I really wanted to do some sort of program that we could work on to actually have a something going on so we could actually educate the community, have some cultural experiences for people. But unfortunately, because we did pass it this year, we don't, we didn't budget for it. So what, what we did do is I, we had the proclamation that will be read tonight. But in addition to that, I wanted to see if we could have somebody come and do a presentation about Juneteenth and the significance of it and that sort of thing. So I actually did reach out to a few people. But realistically, we all know that probably the person in our city who is the most passionate about history of Dania Beach and South Broward in general is Emmanuel George. And he has spoken before, he has done presentations before on a number of things. And he's actually been doing some very interesting work outside of Dania Beach. So I wanted to give him an opportunity to come here and talk to us all about Juneteenth and do a presentation for the city as well as talk to us about some of the projects that he's been doing and some of the things he'd like to do in the future. So with that, I did see him sign on. So is Emmanuel here? Let me raise him to the level where he can.
I, I see him as an attendee.
Can we move him to palace so that he can speak? There we go. He's got his hand raised.
Well, he can speak as an attendee. Do you need him to shift? Well, he's managed now.
Yeah, that's okay. I, I. I hear you. Can't see you.
Okay. All right. Um, I'm sorry. It's my first time downloading this app. Um, good evening, everyone. Hope all is well. This, you know, this month in general is a phenomenal month. June, uh, Juneteenth is here and is being acknowledged as a, as a holiday, which is definitely great for everyone, everyone, I feel. You know, we all need time off and it's, I feel as if it's like another July 4th in a sense. But you know, with everyone acknowledging the plight of African Americans and what they went through. So June is, Juneteenth is basically the ending of chattel slavery. And I wanted to talk about the program that I was in, and I want to give thanks first and foremost to two people who helped me throughout this journey. And one of them is Dr. Marvin Dunn, who wrote the book Race, I mean, sorry, Black Miami, the Twentieth Century. And the second one is Dr. Kitty Oliver, who wrote the book Race and Change in Hollywood, Florida. I consider them as two of some of the biggest inspirations who have helped me become the man that I am today. And it was Dr. Kitty Oliver that actually gave me the opportunity to go to Lake Wales. And when I went to Lake Wales, I was there for two months, basically, um, working at the Lake Wales Museum. And I was doing their African American archive project. And in October, they'll have a exhibition based on the work that I did. So while I was there, I was doing oral interviews. I was scanning photographs. I was collecting artifacts of the community. I was doing community outreach, and I learned a lot about the history of Lake Wales, the black history of Lake Wales specifically. And when I was there, one of the things that interested me the most was when I interviewed Ms. Dorothy Scott, who graduated from Roosevelt High School, class of nineteen sixty-eight, just like Addicks. That was their last graduating class. And one of the things that she said to me that really caught my attention was that Lake Wales, you know, which is the quarters, which is the nickname for the historic black community, is a designated historic district. And one of the ways that they did that was through preservation of their communities, which is, you know, something that I've always, you know, vouched for is to preserve as much history that we have left. And recently, yesterday, Coach Washington, an elder from, from the community, actually passed yesterday. Last Tuesday, my grandmother passed away at the age of one hundred years old in ten months. And just in general, every day we're getting older. Oh, you have a lot of elders who are still here. It's just getting older. Mr. Peterman is getting older. Rodney Collins is getting older. Bobby Grace is getting older. Henry Graham is getting older. So many people are getting older, and then they're starting to leave us. And when they leave us, basically, their stories leave us, you know? So my goal that once I came back was to be able to do a similar program down here. And that program would basically be the same, would be very similar, conducting oral interviews, collecting artifacts, scanning photographs, and I feel as if I've gotten a lot better at this work that I'm doing. So I feel as if with Juneteenth being here, that, you know, we, I mean, we can honor Juneteenth with the holiday, but I feel as if we have to honor by having transformative action. And transformative action is preserving this history that will last a lifetime. We have to archive before it's too late. Too many elders are leaving us. And that also creates records, data, information that can be used so that, let's say, in the future, there is a recreation of the Paradise Club that was in Dania Beach. You know, that can, the oral interview views from the elders can be used to recreate that, that scenery. So, you know, and then also, it also taps into the cultural tourism economy because history is what attracts people to areas. And we live in Florida, and tourism is what drives our economy. So with the cultural tourism economy, you look at Overtown, for example. Overtown's history attracts people there, which generates revenue into their, into the, the Greater Miami. And the same can be done here for Dania Beach and for South Broward in general. But we're speaking specifically for Dania Beach. So cultural tourism is definitely something that we can do to inject economic growth into our community. And by preserving our history can be a beautiful way to do that. So I am thankful for being here and being on, on this platform, speaking to, to everyone. And I, and I definitely feel as if this month, you know, because it's Juneteenth, that, that's happening this month. It is also Black Music Month that's happening this month, which is, you know, you know, musicians, as many people may know, it started with black people, the history of, of music, you know, from rock and roll to hip hop to jazz, you name it. It's also Caribbean Heritage Month. We also have in South Florida, a diverse group of Caribbean descendants here from Bahamians. And if it wasn't for the Bahamians, there would not be no Miami. Many people do not know that because it, it took the vote of the Bahamians to incorporate Miami in eighteen ninety-six. And that was courtesy via Marvin Dunn in the book Black Miami, the Twentieth Century. And that is also in the records of the Black Archives in Overtown. So, um, with that being said, there's also many Haitians here. There's many Jamaicans here. There's many Trinidadians here and many different other groups, Latinx people, people of Afro, Latinx people, I'm sorry. So, um, you know, I tend to be very passionate when I speak, so sometimes I kind of jumble up my words a little bit. But, but the, the point I'm trying to say is that June is a, is a very significant month with it being Juneteenth, Black Music Month, Caribbean Heritage Month, and, you know, honoring the history of African Americans here is a great thing. But we do need transformative measures. And I feel as if Dania Beach being once a spearhead of Broward Black Archive Project or whatever term it will be called, would be definitely transformative, mainly for the community. Because think about fifty, sixty years from now, kids will be able to hear their great, 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 great grandparents tell their stories. They'll be able to even see their great, 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 great grandparents. You look at the past, we see the likes of Dr. Sistrug. We see the likes of Mizell and Leola Collins and Boise Waiters and all of these legendary people that paved the way in Broward County. But many of us don't even know how they sounded like or what their posture was like. Sometimes we hear about it from elders on, on what they sounded like or how tall they were. But now with this project, we can now be able to document those that are still here so that fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years from now, our descendants can then see our, their ancestors. So I definitely feel as if that this is something that will be very transformative and powerful for generations to come. And this is definitely something that is really needed because tomorrow is not promised. There's no telling who will be leaving us tomorrow. And again, the elders are getting older, and we need to really act upon this fast. So with Juneteenth coming, let's honor Juneteenth. And then let's also look into ways that we can really be transformative in this city. Thank you.
Emmanuel, can you explain when you did the project in Lake Wales, how it was funded?
Yes. So in Lake Wales, the Lake Wales History Museum is, that was actually a train station back in the day. And it became, it became, it was preserved and it became a museum. And it was funded through the Florida Humanities Council. The, they had, they gave the, the museum a grant of five thousand dollars, but it was, it had to be matched by an organization or a business. And Duke Energy did not match that five thousand. They doubled it. So they gave them ten thousand. So in total, it was fifteen thousand that went to this project to preserve the history of African Americans in Lake Wales. Because when I got there, when I went to the museum, all they had in their, in the Lake Wales Museum was literally just a coroplast poster of Roosevelt High School. And there was, and when I was there for the two months, I found out, I found out that there's a lot of black history in, in this community. Even there's even a connection between Roosevelt High School and Lake Wales and the likes of Blanch Ely High School, Dillard High School, and Addicks High School. Because many folks from Roosevelt High School would come down to South Florida because we had state-of-the-art gyms. So when it came to like the big tournaments, they were coming down to Blanch Ely. And many folks from Roosevelt went to schools like FAMU and Bethune, and they actually knew some folks down here. There was an, an elder, Mr. Hawkins, who graduated class of sixty-four, who actually knew some of the Cumberbatch family that's from down here because they went to FAMU together. So it shows that there was a connection, and you even had the likes of Ray Charles, who we all know. I'm sure everybody here knows who Ray Charles is. Ray Charles had twelve kids, and one of the kids he had was in Lake Wales. James Brown used to go to Lake Wales. There was also a black beach, but it was really a lake. So it shows that there's a connection between the, he up there and down here because they had the Chitlin Circuit that used to travel through, through Lake Wales as well.
So, um, we had an opportunity to speak earlier this week with our city manager as well and, and talk about what you wanted to do. And I know with your grandmother passing, you don't know if, if you would be able to be here at the, at the next meeting. I just want to make sure that people have the information that they need as far as what it is that you might be seeking in, in the future, which would be, you're not looking for a, a museum. You're looking for the funding in order to do preservation of interviews, oral history, documents, that sort of thing.
Yes. I, I actually will be here for the next meeting. I'm actually, I won't be able to go because I wanted to make sure my father went to go see his mother one last time. So I basically helped cover that for him because a travel ticket to Dominica is anywhere ranges from eight hundred to fourteen hundred dollars. So I wanted to make sure that the thing was fine for him. And I'm basically making sure that, you know, the funeral will be broadcasted. So my grandmother's grand, our other grandkids and great-grandkids can get to see her one last time. The project would be mainly for the time because that was what I needed the most when I was in Lake Wales, was time to, you know, to speak to elders. Sometimes you might speak to two elders. It might take four or five hours because they have so much to tell. There's also time in having to search for photographs of documents, like, you know, artifacts, like, let's say, a letterman jacket, your yearbooks. You know, old police uniforms, different things like that that can be archived. And then also having to get release forms, waivers on these archives. That's another thing as well. So if an elder from the community decides to give their Addicks letterman jacket, they are signing a waiver because that it is going to be archived forever. So we also have to understand the legal ramifications when it comes to archiving. And the main goal for this project is, again, is the time. You know, um, I, I, I've, I've done this work for, since about two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. And the main thing that always was slowing me down was, was time. So if I'm able to dedicate my full time into this project, it would definitely be very transformative for generations to come, especially for those who in the community oftentimes may feel left out.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, we have comments. I know that Commissioner Davis has her hand up. Go ahead.
Good evening, and thank you, Emmanuel George. I find this to be a very exciting project. When I was, I had the opportunity and the very great privilege to go around with Mr. Rodney Collins for about two hours. And he took me and showed me where his father was born and the house that he grew up in and showed me his family and his properties and the rich history that he had in Dania Beach. He showed me the stores, and he showed me where the cinema was and how that was a thriving, wonderful community. And the whole time he was talking, I just kept thinking, somebody needs to record this. Somebody needs to get this on document. Somebody, this is such great, great information. And he's just talking to me as a person, and I hear the passion in your voice. And I hear, you know, how much that really means to you. And knowing that we would have somebody who could really go around and get these stories and archive them to be in perpetuity in history as a part of Dania Beach history, I think is just absolutely awesome. So I thank you for coming and bringing this idea to us this evening. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank you for coming on to speak, Emmanuel, about the project. But I, I am going to say something. This needs to be discussed in a budget meeting. We cannot keep, we, we, we are setting a bad precedent. I think that when we have come forward to supporting schools, those funds were, were, were taken out. When we've come to support other things, those funds were taken out. We said that everything needed to be discussed within the budget. We don't have different people coming up here requesting for funds because it has turned very contentious at times. And I do think if this is a project that the commission decides to move forward with, it needs to be discussed in the budget. And I do know we have monies for contingencies. And I do know from speaking with the city manager, within our budget discussions, we are going to allow or try to allocate monies per commissioners to be able to do different projects. And this, if this is something that you want to take on Commissioner Llewellyn, you will be able to do that at that time. But I, I know that people are dying every day. I know that time is, since I know all of those things. Like, I am very close and near and dear to all of those. You know, Coach Washington coached my father playing basketball. So his death was very near and dear to our family. He, I pass by him weekly, cutting his grass in, in the very late ages of, of his life. But I do think that things need to be done decent and in order. Because I can guarantee you, if I come with a project or, or asking for money for something next week, as I have in the past, the, the, the thing that has been hammering home to me is that these things need to be addressed in the budget. So I, I, I do, I love black history. I am black history. You know, I, I'm, I'm all of those things. But I do think that everything has its time and place. And if we are going to do this, you have to do it properly and, and in order. And in order would be to address this type of project that, from what my understanding, when speaking with Emmanuel, will be anywhere up from seven thousand to fifteen thousand dollars, which would include a grant match from other business owners or developers or organizations, correct, Emmanuel?
Yes, it would be seventy-five hundred for the project, but then for it to be batched by a developer or an entity, which would total to fifteen grand.
Correct. So there is, there, there is multiple things that need to go into rotation. There are, you know, the whole scope of the project and how you go to match that funding and how we choose to fund this project. Those, those need to be addressed appropriately and, and in the budget. That's just my, that is just my opinion. I see Commissioner Llewellyn.
Actually, that was, I was going to close this. I didn't know if anybody had any other questions or comments, but I was going to close this by saying that we've actually talked about this, and I had advised that it wouldn't be something that we'd be able to vote on tonight, but that it is something that I would like to put on the next agenda for us to discuss in a little more detail as far as the, the monies that would be needed so that, because we're going into budget season. So we're getting ready to go into our budget for next year. So I thought it would be the appropriate time to put it out there for us to take a look and see if it's something that we want to put aside for the budget. And, and that is something that I did discuss with Emmanuel in advance as well. So he's aware of that. But, uh, so that is something I'll just tell Tom Schneider now, that I'd like to put it on as a discussion item for the next meeting just to discuss whether or not it's something that we think we want to go forward with. Because when we do discuss budget, then we could potentially include that as well.
Can we not, can we not discuss this at the budget workshop? Because there are a lot of different things that I have suggested to the city manager as well that has not gone on commission meetings that was suggested to go to the budget workshop. So this wasn't, this wouldn't be something to put at the budget workshop as well?
City manager?
Yes, yes. Actually, um, our goal would be to give you the draft budget. I was just discussing this with Frank. On July thirteenth, we set the military rate. Following Tuesday, July twentieth, we give you a draft budget. A lot of that draft budget is going to be made up of your priorities for, for the strategic plan. One of the things that I was discussing with Frank is, and I've discussed it with you, mayor, I think I've discussed it with you, Commissioner Llewellyn, as I begin to meet with all of you during budget, is putting aside, instead of one lump, a commission contingency, giving you each twenty-five thousand dollars. I mean, clearly, you would have to come and present it to your colleagues, but allowing you to think outside the box, like you've been doing already, whether it is, is Commissioner Oddman with the One Thousand Mermaids or Commissioner Davis with the Piscine Beach. I think that you guys are very active commissioners. So I think when we look at some dates for budget workshop, you can use it from contingency that you each will have, or you could decide to do, you know, an, an allocation, whatever you want to do. But, but I believe that as we start having these budget workshops, I think that this is probably will be the appropriate place.
So would it be better at the budget workshop, or should we put it on the next agenda?
I think, I think that you're going to have, if, if you approve the budget the way we, we presented for, for the peace of the mayor and commission, you are going to have your own twenty-five thousand dollars in addition to another loan sum. But I really think, and, and you could use monies for things like this from your own budget. Or you could say, hey, guys, I have other projects that I want to present. You know, I, I would need, you know, your support to put this on, on a, on a separate line item. But I agree that we should be consistent and stay discussing budgetary items in the budget process, in the budget workshops.
Okay. That's fine. That's.
Commissioner Davis and then Commissioner Oddman.
That was a left up Commissioner Davis.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Oddman.
Yeah, I was just going to say before it left my head, one of the things that we could do possibly was leftover from the Historical Society. We had five thousand dollars that was earmarked. Primarily, it was going to be for archival purposes. Since then, the board has never met because of COVID, and that five thousand is just sitting there. So, you know, I, I'm always very wary of just leaving money laying around or earmarked. So this sounds like maybe that's something that could go towards Emmanuel's program to get the archiving started. And maybe, you know, I, I kind of heard what the city manager was saying, something about everyone getting twenty thousand or whatever, and the two thousand can come from somewhere else. But whatever it was to, to maybe get this started, I think that would be a good use of the five thousand dollars.
That could, that, through the mayor, if I may, and thank you for bringing this up, Commissioner Oddman. We've always been a champion for, for history and historic, anything historic, be it structures or historic preservation. I, I think that if we do have those five thousand, that we can start with an initial phase and then, you know, discuss the rest during the budget process. I think that's the direction that you guys would, would want to go.
Yeah, we can discuss that at the next meeting. I just wanted to put it out there before that left my head.
The, the, the Historic Society, that's not a part of our decision-making process, is it?
No, but we, we, we set aside five thousand dollars, and we'll have to check, I guess, with, with city attorney Schneider. And because I don't remember exactly what it was, but.
Gave him the information.
Oh, sorry. I promoted you to a city attorney. Sorry about that. To Tom Ansboro, I believe we put aside five thousand dollars for historical things. And I, I believe we, we, under that was archival, so this would fit in there. And assuming that I am correct in that memory, I, and I guess I would have to get the consensus from you guys, which again, we will do at another meeting. I'm just offering up and saying that I think that that would be an appropriate use of that money since, you know, you sort of lose it. So then maybe we could just put this as an agenda item for the next meeting to discuss that since it is money that are currently in the budget that are already set aside for this particular purpose. Maybe not for this particular purpose, but for something very similar. Yeah, right on.
I'm, I'm still unsure and I'm unaware of what's going on. So the Historic Society, we have the ability to make decisions over those funds?
I don't know. I'm not the Historic Society. I don't represent the Historic Society.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just.
City earmarked money to give to the Historical Society. I believe the Historical Society does not in any. I believe the Historical Society does not in any real fashion currently exist because they never got past meeting number one. So no official legal Historical Society exists. The goal was, so if they want to start it up, you know, good on them. I hope they start it up. But the city, the city had five thousand dollars for them, so.
So how about, how about this? How about we have our city attorney take a look to see whether or not it is something that is feasible? And work with finance to see if that is something that is feasible. And if so, if we could, then, then we can put it on the agenda for next meeting, if it is something that is feasible. If it is not, then he can send us an email or a memo that tells us that it can't be done that way. And, you know, we'll know and we'll be able to uh, just put it on the budget process for next year.
Okay, but I also want to know about the match process and if it's just feasible for Emmanuel just to have those five thousand dollars. Because I believe what he was telling me, what, what happened in Lake Wells, it was seventy-five hundred plus an additional seventy-five hundred that was from other, you know, um, developers or, or stakeholders. And so we would need to establish all of that first before we just go and say, here is five thousand dollars without really having a plan on that would make him the most successful with the project instead of just, you know. Emmanuel, I'll ask you this. Is it just feasible to, if it's possible, is it just feasible to give you those five thousand dollars? And then what will happen with our participation in the city and what access would we have to that? Or is it more feasible to have the, the entire amount or to try and bring us back something that? How, how are you going to get the other matches? Is there any plan to get the other matches? Is it something that you need from us further?
Um, well, um, what I, what I would like to see is um, um, for the budget to be seventy-five hundred. And then from a developer um, in Daniel Beach, um, there's several developers here. For them to be able to match that seventy-five hundred so that it, it can be able to maximize the full potential. Because one of the ways of archiving, what I was saying earlier, was to be able to capture these moments. Um, to be able to capture the people that we're interviewing, um, be able to see them visually. So um, that, that would be, um, that would be the, the way I'm going. Because in Lake Wells, they only received five grand from the Florida Humanities Council. But Duke Energy, um, instead of matching the five grand, they gave them ten grand. So in total, it was, it was, it was fifteen grand for this project. And um, you know, so I would, I would like to see something similar to that. Um, because for the most part, that, that was just a, a small section of the city. And it'll be the same way for here, being that of Daniel Beach. Because I, but I don't know the exact population numbers for the, the northwest side of Daniel Beach. But I know um, the, the black population in Lake Wells is roughly around five grand, I mean, five thousand people. So it might, and maybe it might be more, and it might be less. But another thing to add too, is with this project in Broward County, in South Broward, is that Daniel Beach connects with Liberia. Daniel Beach connects with Hallandale. Daniel Beach connects with Carver Ranches because the nucleus of these communities was Addicks High School. And that's what's gonna bring the, um, this program together is the elders all share a common story of being students at Addicks when it was a high school. So the numbers will actually be a little bit more in terms of population density. It, because they're all gonna connect some, um, throughout this, um, this project. And so I'm talking about the elders from these communities, not the, on a political level, but the people um, who live in these areas. They all share a, a connection. So um, I would, I would like to, I'm sorry, um, I would like to, um, uh, whi- whichever way is most feasible, but I definitely feel as if, um, you know, definitely having it be matched by a developer or entity, um, you know, whether it's a, a local business in Daniel Beach, a church, or whoever. Um, just as long as we make this happen, um, for, for those who are still here with us.
Okay, so I, I'll, again, I'll recommend because it seems like it's still a lot of things that need to be worked out before the next two weeks. Um, especially um, that we, and, and if he's requesting more than the five thousand dollars to make this a budgetary item, if Commissioner Llewellyn wants to use this out of her appropriate funds when we initiate the budget or discuss the budget, that would be fine. And then you could work together to, um, you know, come up with the other match of the funds. Um, that would be my recommendation, uh, for lack of time, because we spent a significant amount of time on this already and I really want to move the agenda forward.
I understand. I would, I would suggest that because five thousand dollars is a start. I mean, and, and we have less than six months of the fiscal year left. So I would, I still think we should put this on the agenda for the next meeting. If, if it's something that might be feasible, I'll talk to legal about it. If it is something that is feasible, then we can put it on the agenda for the, for the next meeting and maybe have some additional information to, to discuss if it's not feasible to move that five thousand dollars. I still think it's something. And regardless of that, you know, it's, we can still talk about it. I, I, I would like.
Say if we have the consensus for it, um, because I really think that it needs to be in the, in the budgetary item. He's just heard the five thousand dollars and still says seventy-five hundred. So I don't know. I, I don't have the consensus to add this to the budget. There's definitely not enough information to how it's going to be matched and how we're going to be involved directly in it. And so I would like to see it in the budget process. Maybe roll over the five thousand dollars of appropriations from this year to next year so you don't lose that. But um, that, that is my recommendation. I don't know if, I don't, I don't, we, we need consensus in order to move forward with it.
Well, everybody's on mute, so.
I, I, I don't have the ability to, they can unmute themselves.
Commissioner Davis is unmuted.
I'll just clarify what's on the table to move forward, to put it on it as an agenda item or to leave it as a budgetary item? Is that what we're, I mean, I.
Correct. And if you leave it as a budgetary item, you can roll over those five thousand dollars and then we can really have a complete program that is presented to us.
Can we still not have that in the budget workshop?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
You can do either or. But, but my thinking was that there's at least five thousand dollars he could start getting started with the process so that it's not delaying cases. We are losing people on a daily basis, so.
I mean, I mean, I can, I, I will say, I'm sorry if I'm cutting anyone off.
Hold on, hold on Emmanuel. Let us make this decision first and then we'll come back.
I just want to be clear. I just want to be clear that the five thousand dollars would allow him to, to get started right away. And then he could still, we could still come back and discuss everything else. But what you're asking Commissioner Llewellyn is to begin to start the process so that he can start like phase one of whatever this project is.
Discuss it further, right, at the, at the next meeting.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
Anybody else?
Okay, uh, go ahead, um, Vice Mayor.
Uh, this wasn't supposed to be about money tonight. It was supposed to be about listening to the uh, project that he's doing. And I, I, I think it's a great idea what he's doing. I just think that we're jumping the gun again. Um, you know, with the funds and so on, getting out of line, I think it's, I think we should, it should go to the budget, the budget workshop. I think, I think, I think Mr. Manuel would uh, uh, would probably appreciate the, the organization doing it the way that he has. Uh, laying down already with seventy-five hundred dollars and, and the other seventy-five hundred dollars. And, you know, you never know what's gonna happen with the historical. There, there's another thing that's already been appropriated for that. And it may go out to some other group that may come in with a different harvest store part of Daniel that they may want to use that for. And you roll it over to allow that to stay in that same area, it would be probably better to leave it there until our budget workshop is discussed. That's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Commissioner Oddman have anything to say?
I don't know. She turned the camera off, so.
Do you want to add anything?
Commissioner Oddman, there, um, waiting, um, Vice Mayor and myself, oh, I don't see her again.
Sorry, I don't know why my, thank you.
Okay, so Vice Mayor and myself are, are recommending that it's discussed at the budget workshop in its entirety. And Commissioner Llewellyn wants to start right now, put it on the next agenda. Um, Commissioner Davis is supporting that. So there, we're looking for your opinion.
Um, I, I would say that we uh, then bring it to, to workshop where, I mean, if we're going to do this the most appropriate and the, the way we, we say we do everything, then take it to workshop. And, and uh, you know, we, we've spent forty minutes talking about this. So um, not, you know, that uh, it, it wasn't a wonderful thing to talk about, but it'll probably be more appropriately and thoroughly uh, fixed and addressed and resolved at budget. So let's do it there.
So we'll do it at budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Emmanuel.
The next item we have is the LGBTQ plus proclamation.
Actually, I haven't done the Juneteenth proclamation yet.
Sorry, go ahead.
Since it just rolled right into it, so let me go ahead and do that. Uh, proclamation, office of the mayor, city of Daniel Beach, Florida. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January one, eighteen fifty-three, declaring the slaves in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment in the United States Constitution, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas communications about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation were delayed by some two and one-half years, two thousand nineteen, eighteen sixty-five, and reaching authorities and African-Americans in the South and southwestern United States. And whereas Emancipation Day observations are held on different days in different states in the South and Southwest and in other parts of the nation. And whereas Juneteenth is also known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Liberation Day, and Emancipation Day. Ultimately, is a holiday celebrating the emancipation of those who had been enslaved in the United States. And whereas June nineteenth has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and nineteenth. And has been celebrated by the African-American community for over a hundred and fifty years. And whereas Americans of all colors, creeds, cultures, religions, and the countries of origin share in a common love and, and respect for freedom, as well as the determination to protect their right to freedom through democratic institutions by which the tenants of freedom are guaranteed and protected. And the Juneteenth Independence Day, along with the Fourth of July Independence Day, completes the America's Independence Day observances. The often repeated proverb, until all are free, none are free, is appropriate to highlight the significance of the end of the era of slavery in the United States and the celebration of freedom for all. And whereas on February nine, twenty twenty-one, the city commission of the city of Daniel Beach adopted Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash zero two zero, specifically recognizing Juneteenth as an official city holiday, holiday for residents and employees. Now therefore, on behalf of the Daniel Beach City Commission, we urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of the celebration and African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and state. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have, how do I say this again? I'll, I'll start my proclamation for the LGBTQ plus proclamation. Whereas the city of Daniel Beach strives to be safe and inclusive community. And whereas Daniel Beach is home to and a destination for residents and visitors of all genders, identities, expressions, and sexualities. And whereas we honor the courage, compassion, and creativity of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and gendered non-conforming people and celebrate the social, economic, and cultural contributions that LGBTQ plus people make to our community. And whereas we also recognize that members of the LGBTQ plus, excuse me, in Daniel Beach and everywhere face discrimination and intolerance, fear and violence, and economic hardship. And understand that transgender and gendered non-conforming individuals are among the least understood, most marginalized, and most underserved populations. And whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ Pride Month is observed annually in the month of June to honor the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall uprising and to recognize the impact that lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals have had on history locally, nationally, nationally, and internationally. And whereas on June fifteenth, twenty twenty, the Supreme Court ruled that existing civil rights law forbids job discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation, which is a majority victory for advocates of gay rights. Now therefore, on behalf of the Daniel Beach City Commission, I, Tamara James, mayor of the city of Daniel Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim June two thousand and twenty-one as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the city of Daniel Beach and encourage all residents to honor and affirm the rights and, and the gender identities, expressions, and sexualities of all people in our community to commit to the elimination of prejudice wherever it exists and to celebrate the diversity of our great city. Thank you. Citizens' comments.
Mayor, I'm sorry, if I may, um, there was an add-on proclamation for Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week.
You are right about that, but I don't see it. Does anyone else have that? Because I don't, I don't see it on my, um, on my digital. Does anyone have it? No? Let me look it up on my phone.
The city clerk, does Tom have it? I mean, he must have.
Yeah, give me a minute. I'm pulling it up.
I have, I have it. I pulled it up. All right, here we go. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens in this community through the enforcement of building, zoning, housing, animal control, fire safety, environmental, and other codes and ordinances. And whereas code enforcement officers are often not credited for the jobs that they do in saving lives and improving neighborhoods. And whereas every day, assisted by support and program staff, they attempt to provide quality customer service to the public for the betterment of the community. And whereas too many times their efforts go unnoticed, even after code compliance have been accomplished due to their efforts and expertise. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly responsible individuals who take their job seriously and are proud of their department and the local government within which they serve. And whereas the Florida Association of Code Enforcement, FACE, has declared the first week of June to be set aside. I don't see the rest of it. I'll just go. Now therefore, on behalf of the city of Daniel Beach, Florida, I, Tamara James, mayor of the city of Daniel Beach, but Dubai here proclaimed June as Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week in the city of Daniel Beach, Florida, in accordance with the statewide observance of the same and encourage citizens of Daniel Beach to join the commission in expressing appreciation for the dedication and outstanding service provided by the individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers. Thank you. Now we have citizens' comments. If there are anyone that is an attendee or a panelist that wishes to address the commission, please raise your hand. You'll be recognized. You have three minutes. Seeing as there are none, we will move to public safety ports. I'm not sure if, oh, I'm gonna say, I'm not sure if you were there, Captain Marks, but glad to have you.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners. Since the last commission meeting, we've responded to four aggravated assaults, four aggravated batteries, four auto thefts, one theft of a motorcycle, one burglary business, five burglary conveyances, two burglary residences, one robbery, ten thefts, and five shoplifting calls. Since the last commission meeting, we have experienced a decrease of five conveyance burglaries, a decrease of three thefts, a decrease of one burglary residence, and a decrease of one burglary business. We've also made forty-one arrests over the last two weeks, uh, one of which was a warrant for grand theft auto. Uh, one of our deputies made contact with the subject. A teletype check revealed an active warrant for grand theft auto and he was taken to jail. We also had an arrest for possession of cocaine, possession drug paraphernalia, multiple warrants reference felony theft, DUI, organized scheme to, scheme to defraud, grand theft, and several traffic violations. Uh, so the suspect approached one of our deputies to ask for directions. The deputy immediately recognized the suspect as being wanted and she was taken to jail. Our crime suppression team received information about subjects selling drugs from a residence. Upon receiving the information, they began surveillance. Investigative stops were conducted on people that were buying drugs from the residents. During these stops, multiple violent felons were encountered and arrested. One such violent felon had active violation of probation warrants for aggravated battery with a firearm and is a documented gang member. During the course of the investigation, a search warrant was obtained and served at the residence. During the search warrant, we recovered five pounds of cannabis, along with a bunch of packaging material. Uh, it was all packaged for street-level sale. Uh, we arrested all the dealers and they were charged accordingly. We arrested all the dealers, and they were charged accordingly. We had a battery on public employee and warrants for grand theft motor vehicle and false imprisonment. A suspect was intoxicated and causing a disturbance while riding on the Broward County bus. The suspect refused to exit the bus even after repeated requests by the bus driver. The suspect then attacked the bus driver, who had to use a Lysol spray can to defend himself. An arrest warrant was obtained, and the suspect was arrested by Miami-Dade PD and was extradited to Broward County Main Jail. Our traffic unit conducted a traffic grant operation where 39 citations were issued. We also placed speed trailers at 400 Southwest 12th Avenue. We placed speed trailers at Lake Shore Drive and Marina in the states of Fort Lauderdale, referenced several speeding complaints that we've received. And we put the message board at Griffin and Federal to deter excessive traffic due to the train delays we've been experiencing. Our commercial vehicle unit has been monitoring Bryan Road and Northwest First Street in reference to numerous dump trucks cutting through the residential neighborhood. Our homeless outreach deputies continued monitoring the Federal Highway Danny Beach Boulevard corridors. This has substantially cut down on the number of homeless loitering and drinking at the bus stops. We're conducting continuous checks at 450 and 500 East Danny Beach Boulevard, as well as the public shopping center. And this has resulted in drastic reduction of subjects drinking beer near these locations. The Griffin Road, State Road 7 intersection continues to be a challenge, however. With continued assistance from Hollywood PD and Davy PD, our homeless outreach deputies have been able to reduce the amount of panhandling. As the county buses are no longer free, several homeless individuals were provided bus passes so they would be able to get to their destinations, such as the Henderson Mental Health Clinic for medication and the DMV office for new ID cards. As you're aware, we did have a homicide the other night. It is an active investigation. It wasn't a random act. And I assure you that as soon as I'm able to obtain updates and the status of the case, I will get it to you.
He said it was a random act? It was not, okay.
It was not.
Okay.
In closing, I'm pleased to announce our Shred-a-thon is going to be held on Saturday, September 11th, at Bass Pro Shops. It's September 11th, that's a Saturday, at Bass Pro Shops, and the times are 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And I'll keep announcing that, and I'll get flyers out to everybody. That completes my report.
Thank you. Chief, what's our?
Good evening, can you hear me this time?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, and our fine citizens in Danny Beach. Again, Danny Beach, our Station 1 and Station 17 continue to be the top rescue call. The amount of calls that they respond to, they continue to be the top, whether by 1 or 40, because, you know, in the fire service, it's always competition, and everybody wants to be number one. But we, you know, last month, we were, I had compared to the next busiest fire station by 40 calls, and this month, we're busy by four calls, but either way, we're still the busiest truck. So we ran a total of 616 calls over the past 30 days. 370 came out of Station 1, and 246 came out of Station 17. So to put it in a small comparison, I took a look at Daniel Point. Last year, Daniel Point ran, we ran 161 calls between January 1st and December 31st. And this year, we're already at 131 calls in Daniel Point. So the trend is, you know, it's getting busier, more traffic, more visitors to Danny Beach, and we're opening back up, so it's just going to continue to be busy. Our CEMP, our emergency plan is complete. And I would like to thank Handito, as he attended a county-wide training that was held by the emergency planners. And we were able to get that completed, and we're training, ready to go in case we have an event. Our hurricane season is predicted to be heavy, so Danny Beach is going to be ready to go. Our inspectors have been busy making sure that all the nursing homes in the area, and that they're prepared, and they're ready. They've been checking, making sure that either their generators or backup generators and all their emergency plans are current, so in case we do have a storm, those nursing homes are ready to go. Schools getting ready to end, so in the next couple of weeks, going around the state, the different schools in Danny Beach, and doing an assessment to make sure that when their children do come back, the schools are safe. What we do is all the fire rescue crews go to the schools, along with the battalion chief that's normally in charge and responds to those schools in case of emergency. And we assess to see what we would need during an emergency and make sure that the schools have everything. Our fire inspectors also attend these meetings, and we sit together with the school board and make sure that the schools in our area are ready to go. So with that, that's all I have for tonight. Do you have any questions?
I don't see any, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the agenda, do we have any polls? I would like to poll 7.5. Do we have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Approve, with the exception of some 7.5 seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
7.5, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Danny Beach, Florida, requesting advanced approval from the City Commission for advertisement to contract financial auditing services for the fiscal year ending September 30 of 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024, and 2025 with three one-year city option renewals, ready for conflicts, further providing for an effective date, finance item.
Thank you. I pulled this item, I know staff knew I was going to pull this item. I've had conversations with staff, and I've also had conversations with Mr. Roger Harvey and staff, who represents our auditing services. And I know that we still have two one-year extensions on this contract, correct, Tom?
Correct.
Yes, and so I'm not in favor of going out to bid for this item for, for the time being, right now. I know that there has been some issues, some uncomfortability with HCT and staff over this past year, but as I was able to sit down with both HCT, Tom, Anne Spurrow, and Frank, I know that we were, we did a lot of dialoguing, and there were things that, you know, staff had said that are deal breakers, and there are things that Mr. Harvey had said that they can bring up to the expectations of both myself and city staff. I want to allow, since I know that staff has also said that the year before, it was an excellent experience, it was an awesome audit, and I don't want to go back out without giving them the opportunity to correct what was wrong in the audit. And so I am asking that we give them an additional year instead of going out to bid right now. Yes, Commissioner Lewin.
Yes, I don't so much have other concerns about the uncomfortableness as I do what the best practice is in this case. And I'll ask finance or city manager, how long has Mr. Harvey's firm been our auditor?
Eight years, Frank, is that correct?
Yes, it's been eight years.
And I'd like to know what the best practices are. How long should an auditor remain with a city?
Oh, go ahead, Frank.
I'm sorry. Yeah, best practices would say that you can have an audit for approximately five years. You can go longer than that if you feel, if there's mutual interest and it's a beneficial relationship to both parties. But considering that the city's been with this firm, we had them for a five-year term. We had them for another three-year term, although they were not the, they were ranked lower. They were ranked near the bottom of all firms that responded at the last time we went out to RFP, but they were chosen anyway by the City Commission. And based on the performance over the last three years, there's been some ups and downs, more downs at this point. And we're 100% comfortable with going out to RFP due to the performance that we've seen, and also seeking to comply with best practices, which is to not have any firm with us for forever, basically, you know. And I understand the request is just for one more year, but right now, we are ready, willing, and able to conduct the RFP process. We have a great procurement administrator who has a draft RFP ready to go. We have two finance directors and one assistant finance director from other cities in Broward County willing to serve on the committee. And all we need at this point is the okay from the City Commission, and appointment of one of the elected officials to serve on that audit committee that's required by Florida statutes, and that's what we're recommending at this time.
And correct me if I'm wrong, though, he wasn't near the bottom of the scoring. He was the last choice, he was eight out of eight, am I correct?
I believe so.
Okay, and he was bumped up for whatever reason. That was before I was on the commission, right before I was on the commission. I'm sorry?
I can speak to that if you might, because it seems to just be that.
I had already been elected, I was sitting in the audience. It was the last meeting before the swearing-in took place. So I was here for the meeting, I do recall it. That's why I brought it up, because it was concerning that somebody who was ranked eight out of eight was bumped up to number one. When, you know, the scoring was done, it was done impartially, and that decision was made. And best practices is five years. I think five years has come and gone, and I think it's time that we move on.
Thank you. I will, in fact, continue to speak to that, because you were in the audience, but you were not a part of the back and forth and the things that were going on behind the scenes. I'm not here to bring up anyone's name, so I will not do that. But the former person who conducted it, and it was a different type of RFP and a committee than it is now, that has been brought to our attention. It was not impartial, it was very personal. Before then, before that meeting, before those things, we had never heard one negative thing about Mr. Harvey and HCT to have them for those five years. I know the county and other cities has had auditors for in excess of 10 years. Five years was the best practice, we went back out to bid. People who were elected to serve this city decided that it was in the city's best interest to continue with Mr. Harvey. Again, there was nothing technical or nothing illegal that had happened that was ever brought to our attention. So it definitely was personal. The person that was ahead of that department is no longer here, and it was more than one personal thing that's happened at that. So I want to be fair. I don't want to just say that, oh, they were eight out of eight. I do want to be fair. I have invited Mr. Harvey and his team here, because I don't want it to be an issue where they can't speak for themselves, because I do think that is fair. And I understand the stance of the city, and Frank understands my stance as well. And that's why we have an elected board to be able to make whatever decisions that we want to make. But I don't want to make it seem like it was eight consecutive years without going out to bid. We did go out to bid. And we did, as a commission and the people who were elected to serve this city, agree to allow Mr. Harvey another opportunity to be our auditor. And again, I'm going to say this on record. Before that RFP process came in and the awards came in, everyone knew that it was very personal, and that's why, that's especially why he was awarded again, because the five years before that, there were no, there were no, there weren't a lot of reasons that, or no reasons that I knew of that we knew that he was not able to be our auditor again. So there's a lot of history that you may or may not know that has happened with this situation. So Commissioner Davis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was not aware that Mr. Harvey was here, and I was not aware of the additional history that you brought up. I would personally like to hear from the firm first, prior to making my comment, since they are here, since he is here.
Mr. Harvey? I know that you and your team, I don't know their names, are may or may not be on. Go ahead, can you speak?
I can.
Yes.
Well, good afternoon to everyone. My name is Rodrick Harvey, partner with HCT. We are the audit firm of record for the City of Danny Beach. I would like to say that, first of all, we would like to ask you for the business or the opportunity to serve again. Over the past several years, we have resolved issues. We noted several findings in the 2018 audit. We've worked with staff through the manager's office over the last two years to resolve, I want to say, eight or seven of those issues with finance and their team. We've also been a constant for the city in times when things have changed at the elected level, at the appointed level, and also at staff level. And so we believe that that institutional knowledge, things that have been done, ways of things being done, is an asset to the great city of Danny Beach. And then also, we know that there is some things that we can work towards. We're willing to work towards those things with Frank and his team. We did have a meeting. I felt that it was nothing substantial, noted, nothing that we could not cure, nothing that we could not address. And so again, we're asking you, as the elected officials, to give us an opportunity to serve. And then lastly, there may be some things regarding the last cafer. Again, as a technical issue, we, as the auditors, issue an opinion on the financial statements. The financial statements themselves are the responsibility of the city of management, and so we like to make that distinction. The AICPA has language that says that very clearly. And so we want to rightly put that before you. And so thank you, Commissioner Davis, for the opportunity to speak. I can fade to the background and answer any questions you may have. But we do have a team ready, and we would like to serve one year or two years at the will of the elected. Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Harvey, for adding your thoughts and additional feelings on the issues. I do remember in some of the meetings with the finance director and with our city attorney that responsiveness to certain requests was a major issue. And we are moving our city forward, we're moving at a fast pace, we're moving, you know, at the most excellent level. It is the standard of excellence that we are seeking. And I just want to ask our finance director, do you think that those are issues that could be resolved?
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, I can't tell you whether they can or can't, because I don't know exactly what's going on in Mr. Harvey's office. I don't know who his staff are that he's going to be using for the audit. So all I can tell you is that this is a single-partner audit firm. If we were with a firm that had a bench of partners and other staff that we could rotate, I would have no issue whatsoever continuing this audit for a period of time. However, at this point, we don't even have the opportunity to say, hey, can we switch things up? Can we change up the team a little bit and maybe get a different look at things? That would help keep us comfortable, and at least that we're getting different eyes on our financials and not just having the same people over and over again, year after year. Because that's part of the issue when it comes to best practices. And I do want to also add for the record that I was on that last audit committee. This is before the Florida statutes changed, and former finance director Nikki Satterfield invited me to sit on that committee. I was involved with the ranking. I was not aware of any issues that were going on with the audit firm. All I know is that I was asked to volunteer, and I sat on the audit committee, and I ranked the firms accordingly, in my professional opinion, in reading their responses. And I can also say that I have nothing but the utmost respect for the former finance director, Nikki Satterfield. As far as I'm concerned, we don't hold personal grudges against companies that the city does business with, because it's not my checkbook, this is not my life, this is my career, and I'm a professional. And I know that Ms. Satterfield sees it the same way that I did, and that's why I was happy to come aboard, based on her recommendation, and come back to the City of Danny Beach. She's one of the people that hired me here in 2006, when I was a young nobody with no experience. So again, I'm pleased to be here, I'm pleased to serve this city. And again, it's our professional recommendation that we go out to RFP. I would even go as far as to say that Mr. Harvey and his team, they can submit a response to the RFP proposal. They're more than welcome to throw their hat in the ring and be considered. We will have a fresh new set of people that are going to review these bids and proposals, and the chips will fall where they may, as they say. So thank you for, again, for giving me a chance to respond to that.
Yeah. So then he just, I wanted to confirm that he does have the opportunity. If we were to put it back out, he could then resubmit a bid. And if he came out on top, then we could... then we could choose him again as our CPA for our city. All right. Thank you so much for your thorough response. That's, I think I'm good.
Thank you. Commissioner Ottman?
Thank you, Mayor. Frank, so was the, was one of the primary concerns, was it, was it the lack of reachability? Is that one of the primary problems? Or, I guess, because I put this in a different category, or was it the, was it the work that was turned out? Was there something that you had an issue with, with the work that was received? Or was it the inavailability? Or both?
I would say it was both of those factors, including other items, which we discussed with you and each of the other elected officials in private meetings, because our hope was that we were going to avoid a public back and forth about this, because I do respect Mr. Harvey. He's a fellow CPA. He's been in business in a very tough place to do business and thrive for a very long time. I do have a lot of respect for him as a professional, and we get along personally as well. I like the gentleman. However, this is not something that I can just concede on and say, yeah, sure, I think things, everything's going to be okay, because the track record does not indicate that. I don't know who he's hiring moving forward, but again, as I said, I know that he is the only principal of the firm. He's very difficult to get a hold of at times. We just recently issued the CRA financials, where we're issuing them, and they've been sitting in his court for a couple of weeks. And this is a financial statement that is much smaller in scope than the city's financial statement. And we sent requests after request after request, and we just kept getting responses of, we're working on it, we're working on it. And I don't know what the holdup was, but we were polite and patient and just followed up, and eventually, I think we got what we were looking for, but it took a lot longer than I would have anticipated at this point. You know, I don't know if it's just a busy time in Mr. Harvey's office, but I just, again, I don't, I didn't, after the meeting that we had a few weeks ago with each of you, and then the meeting we had with Mr. Harvey, I would have expected a very prompt response and very quick attention to what we needed at that point with our ongoing services, especially that he's here tonight saying he wants to continue with the city, but we didn't. We actually just got more of the same old, and that, to me, that just doesn't give me any confidence.
Thank you for that answer. And, yeah, I don't want to get into the weeds about anyone or any of the businesses that we've been working with. I was just trying to, you know, that conversation privately was a few months ago, and I was trying to think in my head if I properly weighted some of the current concerns that you brought up. My, one other question that was in my head, is there a benefit to retaining a firm in excess of five years? Because from what I understand, it's not terribly uncommon. So what would the, are there benefits?
So, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, the benefits of continuity are there, okay? Just as in, you want to have your department directors as long as you can, because you want to have that. You don't want to lose that institutional knowledge, and that's all fine and well. However, there's a couple of issues. Number one, it takes a new firm usually about a year or two to get a handle on any city situation. And you go through the first cycle, it's all getting to know you. You go through the second cycle, and it's pretty much, you have it down pat. So there's not that high of a learning curve when you go out to the market. And secondly, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, if we could keep, if we could keep with a firm, but be able to maybe change up the staff dynamic a little bit, that might help solve some of the problems. At least that would give us some confidence that there's a new approach, a new look, and turning over a new leaf. And, but again, we were not going to get that if we continue. And, again, to just push for one more year when there's really no compelling reason not to, that I can think of, I don't have an answer to that.
Okay. I guess, because, so I was trying to read some of the, from some of the best practices of this, and it was talking about how historically, the most mistakes when you bring on a new auditing firm occur, occurred within the first three years. So I was trying to understand why five years was the, why, if, why and if it was the best practices, but your answer gave me some clarity. So thank you, Frank.
Yeah. I see Commissioner Llewellyn's hands up, but I do want to give Mr. Harvey the chance to address some things that I know that in our meeting with Frank and Tom, one of those things were, one of the issues or the things that we spoke about was responsiveness, and spoke about the structure of the firm. And I was very clear at that meeting, and so everyone was very clear at that meeting, if there was not a change in that, to have someone definitely designated to Dania Beach, who can make decisions on behalf of that firm, that would not be something we support. And so, Mr. Harvey did ask for the opportunity to bring us back some options or an option that I'm waiting to hear if he has done that or not, in order to see if the structure is different, because that would change the dynamic of the conversation of availability and to have someone dedicated just to Dania Beach, because I believe, just like I believe everyone else believes, that we should be a priority regardless of who we are dealing with, when we are dealing with it, we need to be that priority. And so I want to give Mr. Harvey the chance to respond to, have there been any organizational changes in the structure, and could there be someone that is dedicated just to Dania Beach that could make decisions on behalf of the firm without having to wait and come back to you?
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor. I want to lay three logs at the feet of the elected official, officials. Log number one is, as relates to responsiveness, I believe we do a great job in two ways. One, acknowledging, hey, we got your email, we got your flag. The issue resolved or resolved around, revolved around, a technical issue in which we acknowledged to finance that we had to get an opinion from the AICPA. That opinion, which I verified, because I wanted to make sure that we, the auditors, addressed it in accordance with the AICPA. AICPA, American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. It is our national regulatory agency. The other thing, log two revolves around the city's CRA audit, which, yes, there is a lag, but it is because there is an OIG inquiry that we made a note of to the city attorney and to finance earlier or late last week, and we are reaching out. We've given a daily update on where we are with responsiveness regarding the OIG inquiry. And so, when you hear, log two, that we just didn't respond, it is not that we did not just respond, it is because we are waiting for regulatory or oversight agencies to get back with us in writing, so that we can either modify or consider it as a part of your entity-wide auditors. So we are not just not responding. And log three, I am happy to announce that we have another CPA on site who's actually on the call. You can see his name, Mr. Todd Buschda, CPA. I was not aware, and I'm happy to hear, that the finance director, Mr. Frank, is open to moving the team, refreshing the team. Todd has just made himself available on screen. And so Todd is someone who can come in at a high level. He is a CPA. He has great experience in the area of government and auditing, and who can refresh the team and be a person that can, in my absence, move the organization forward. And so we would love to take Frank up on the olive branch to be able to refresh the team. We have people that we can move and bring into place to give, as the finance director has said, a new, fresh set of eyes, different from top to bottom, whether that be new staff, in the case of Mr. Buschda, who is online now, a new CPA, to be able to give just what was asked for, based on an opportunity to serve, to be able to move the organization forward. And so those three logs is what I lay at your feet for consideration.
I'm trying to remember the order. I think it was Commissioner Llewellyn was next.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate your responses. This is not a personal thing, by any means. And I feel like having the individual that you brought here today, Mr. Busch, I can't see his full name, Mr. Buschda. I appreciate that, but I believe that you already had somebody previously who was assigned just to Dania Beach, and there were still some issues with it at that time. But again, my bigger concern is, although there might be some benefits to having a constant, I think there are, there's a reason why there's a statute in place. And there is a reason why the Florida law requires that you do put this out for bid every so often. And I feel like it is, if you have the opportunity, you can bid again. There's no reason why you couldn't do that. That's what happened the last time, and a decision was made at that time. We have a different commission. It has been another couple of years, another three years. So I think this may be the time that we need to go back out to bid and see what else is out there and see what the situation is. I don't think that necessarily, my personal feeling is, this is not the area that I think you really want to have a constant through changes with a commission or with staff or anything else. It's something that I feel like, and just in business in general, when you have somebody come in and audit things, you want to change it up every once in a while and see if somebody else sees something different. There might be things that you did not feel were important, but somebody else might feel are important. There might be things that you felt were extremely important that somebody else doesn't think are important. And I just think that this is, that's the reason why auditors do change. And yes, it does happen in some places, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's the best practice, where auditors stay for a longer period of time. And I'm more concerned about best practices. I'm more concerned about trying to make sure, especially since we are moving so quickly and we are growing, and there are so many things going on, that we are getting what's best for our city. It might be you. I don't know. But at this point, I feel like it's important that we have an opportunity to see who else is out there. That's all.
Thank you. I'll have Frank, and then I'll have Commissioner Ottman.
Thank you, Mayor. In response to Mr. Harvey, because all this is on the record, and I want to make sure that the city has a chance to respond. The first issue with the city, where we had a problem with our financial statement that Mr. Harvey had to seek opinion from the AICPA, that's not a reason to hold anything up, because we waited a while for that to occur, and then I picked up the phone and called the AICPA and got an answer in 20 minutes. So to say that that was a good reason to drag out the end of an audit, I disagree with. The second one being of the CRA. The Office of the Inspector General did submit an inquiry to the CRA a few months ago regarding grants to the community, and we don't know whether it's an investigation. They sent us a request for records, and we responded. The city attorney responded. So, again, we didn't get that question from Mr. Harvey until after we waited and waited and waited, and then, once they were ready, they said, oh, about that OIG thing, we need to look into that. But we had already been waiting about two to three weeks to get some review and some feedback on the annual financial report. So, again, I don't think that their responsiveness has been, the lack of response has been justified given the circumstances. So, and I don't know Mr. Busch. I don't know, never met him, never seen his name before. I couldn't tell you who he is. Don't know if he's a Florida CPA. Don't know if he's going to be with Mr. Harvey tomorrow. So all I can tell you is, at this point, we are definitely recommending that we do put out the RFP. We allow Mr. Harvey and his team to respond and give it their best proposal, and we see what the market will bring us, because that's always the best way that cities get the best for their residents and their taxpayers, and that's how we show transparency and almost accountability as we move forward in this city with growing reserves, with growing revenues, and everything else that comes along with the development that we have.
Thank you. Commissioner Ottman?
I'm just looking at my notes here. So in regards to the statute, I think I misunderstood it. I thought it was every, like, five to seven years, but has he, have we reached five years with there, with HTC?
Not with this current contract, no.
What year are we on?
Three, with the option.
That's what I thought. Okay. No, I just, because I wanted to make sure, because I was listening to what Commissioner Llewellyn said, I thought she was referring to that we were out of compliance with the statute, but now I understand what she meant. Okay, so now that I understand that, Mr. Harvey, so there was also mention that before, perhaps somebody had been, well, first, let me address something you said. You said, in my absence, Mr. Busch, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name, would be available to us. Do you have any plans for any prolonged absences, or did you just mean in general, expected absences?
No, just in general, just as a part of a way to move matters forward, whether I'm in other meetings or in other places, but no, I'm not expecting any prolonged absences. I'm usually right-connected with all of our clients. But again, as was stated, we want to grow our bench, and so we believe that having Mr. Busch allows that bench to be grown and to be able to give valid input where needed.
Understood. So, you know, my colleagues have all brought up a terrific point, that the city is expanding rapidly, and we, while we've always had standards of excellence, we've really upped our expectations across the board of everyone, of our departments, of us, our elected, of our city managers. Everyone's been expected to up their game. So can you understand where, you know, everyone, we're coming from? We want to make sure that we have a match, that we have people on board that we're working with, that are going to be able to prioritize Dania Beach and the needs that the city has, that may be different than what we had three months, three years ago. In that time, things have really ramped up. So do you feel that with this new partner on board, that it's going to be enough to address what's really an expanded list of needs, perhaps, and expectations of quicker responses, whether you're absent or not?
Yes, we feel that we can perform at the level required and desired.
Okay.
Okay, well, we can move on. I don't want to prolong the situation. I'm going to make a motion to extend the contract and not go out to bid, and we can vote it up or vote it down.
Was it, the extension was for one year, Mayor?
Yeah, you can only do one year, and you have to come back into the other year, correct, Tom?
Correct.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Davis?
You're muted, but I believe. No.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
No.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. Commissioner Ottman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sabino?
No.
Mayor James?
Yes.
Motion failed three to two.
Now we need a motion on the resolution, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you. Call the roll, please. Go ahead, Frank.
We need an appointment, because we have a to-be-determined city elected official for the committee. We need that to be included with the language in the resolution to be adopted.
Okay. I would like to nominate myself, being the chair and the mayor of the city, to be on that board.
I'd like to nominate myself as well. It can only be one person?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone more neutral that's interested?
What do you mean, more neutral?
Well, I try, you know me, I try and pick the most middle-of-the-road person. We're not going to get into the weeds about it, but I was, I'm looking for the most boring choice. I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to cloud the argument. I don't want it to be contentious. I don't want it to be.
You can be on the board, Lauren.
I would like to nominate myself.
All right. Let's move forward. Some mosquitoes, sorry. Anyone have issues with Commissioner Ottman being on the board? Okay, there we go. Let's move forward. Have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please. Call the roll, please.
Could I get that? Who made the motion and who seconded?
Llewellyn made the motion. I think Commissioner Davis seconded.
Thank you. Here's the roll. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Otman?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes.
Mayor James?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Next we have, we all have bids and requests for proposals. We have a public hearing.
My one is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dania Beach, Florida granting to People's Gas vision of Tampa Electric Company, its successors, and assigned the non-exclusive natural gas franchise agreement to use the public rights of the City of Dania Beach, Florida and prescribing the terms and conditions under which the franchise may be exercised. Right for Catholics providing for severability, further providing for an effective date. Second and final reading of this ordinance.
Thank you. We have. Oh, this is for you. So we don't need one. This is the public hearing. Anyone to speak for or against this?
Make a motion to move the item, Mayor.
I'll second it. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Otman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes.
Mayor James?
Yes.
Motion carried by zero.
Next, we have, we don't have a discussion of possible actions, but we do have permission comments. Commissioner Davis?
Let me keep them brief this week. Good evening, everyone. I just finished a three-week, I think all of you have probably gone through with the IEMO conference with the Florida League of Cities. It was baptism by fire. It was a very intensive course and training, but I learned so much. And what I'm happy to report is that there are so many cities who know about Dania Beach and who speak so positively about our city. We have a great reputation amongst our colleagues in our sister cities, in Broward and Dade and all around Florida. When I talked to them, a lot of the conversation, many of the presenters kept saying, well, you know, you need to make sure that your commission is moving towards the, a shared mission and a shared vision and a shared goals. And I was happy to talk about our strategic planning and how our city manager brought us together to have those shared vision, mission, and goals. And I can tell you, people were talking, coming up to me saying, you guys sound way too organized. You sound way too, you know, you know, in the right direction. I wish I had that. And, and even though you have people who have differing opinions, you have strong commissioners and you have different directions that you'd like to go, having that shared mission and vision is something so huge that came out of that conference. And I just wanted to share that with you. I am more prepared for budget. I don't know how prepared for budget I am, but I think I'm much more prepared than I would be had I not attended that conference. I'm glad that we have these opportunities to do that. And I'm just going to leave it there, but I want to thank us all for putting in the time to do what we have done to, to create a citywide vision. And I look forward to getting that document. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. Several of us attended the PEA luncheon this, this week or last week, which is the Port Everglades Association. It's a huge economic engine that drives a lot of business and a lot of revenue into all the cities and drives a lot of tourism. And I, I was very pleased to see that in the initial presentation that was done to kind of get everybody revved up, they did a series of different photographs from all different places that are directly impacting through the port, whether it was photos from the port or from other nearby locations, excuse me. And the very last shot in that, before they went on to the next part of the program, which it sat on it for a little while, was a picture of our Morrison Hotel, which is no longer the Morrison, I always forget what it's called. But it was the mural on the front that said Dania Beach. It was, it was very, it was the Della, right? So it was good to see that because they definitely made us a centerpiece to that project. So next thing is, thank you, Commissioner Otman, for the Thousand Mermaids Project that you spearheaded. We all went to the ribbon cutting for, for that, for part of it. The, the mermaid tail that's out on the beach now, as well as one of the examples of the, the actual things that are going to be put underwater. And since that day, I have seen no less than a dozen photographs on social media of people who have been taking pictures of themselves with the fishtail, taking pictures of the actual area. And it's definitely something that's already generating a lot of interest and is clearly a good project for the city. So not just for the tourists, but also for the, for the environment and the artistic rendering of it. But it's definitely something that is a good project and I'm glad that we were able to support it. Next, we have several Memorial Day services that took place. We had the two American Legion posts. We were able to memorialize our, two of our fallen soldiers. Jerry Guzbi, who passed away this year, and Dick Klug, who passed away actually the year before. But they both have been staples in the community. And it was, it was nice to be able to have that opportunity to memorialize them. Also, something of interest, I don't know if everybody's aware, at post three or four, they actually took a vote there and they are going to be non-smoking. So it was a, it was a pretty decent spread as far as the vote. So that's coming soon. So that's something that's a big deal for, for these posts. Last thing I want to mention is Northwest First Street. The improvements that are beginning look fantastic. I'm, I'm glad to see movement. It looks like things are coming along. And I know it's just paving so far, but it really does make a huge difference. So looking forward to seeing everything else that comes of it. So with that, Happy Father's Day to any of the dads that are out there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Otman?
Yeah, just a brief thank you again for, for all of you who came out to the selfie tail, ribbon cutting. And I hope all of you are getting your fins and your scuba gear and your snorkel gear polished because I will hopefully, maybe by the next meeting, be coming back at you with the date, the specific date of when we will be putting the, the mermaids into the water. I think I told you July. So we should have that date by then. And I hope that everyone will be in attendance for that. That's all I have for this evening. Good night.
Thank you. Could you give us those dates to see if we are able to be in attendance? Because I, I know that some of those days we are traveling maybe, and I don't want to, I want to make sure everyone is here for the ribbon cutting and to be able to celebrate the deployment and stuff of it. Or is it already locked in and we can't change it?
It, it's not locked in. It, it's, it's very weather dependent and dependent upon like the barge that's going to be going out. I, I will talk to Stacy and see if maybe we can get some flexibility, like maybe two dates. I'll, I'll send her off. Candito, are you on the line right now?
I'm just not going to be here. My 20th, 25th, I'm not going to be there that week, so.
Candito, can you get an update from Stacy for when the deployment will happen? Along with a request of is it feasible to have two or three dates on the table?
Absolutely. And just so everyone knows, it will be in August, not in July.
Oh, sorry, I said July. What's hap, what's July?
No, we were looking towards the end of July or August for the deployment. I know the mayor had some conflicts in July.
No, July is the pier. July is, I, I, is when it is, isn't something going off in July in the, in the pier? And then the boat thing with the commissioners would be in August. That's, is that correct?
No, no. The deployment will be in August. And we were going to do something on the pier at the same time that that deployment was going on.
Okay. Either way, let's, let's just get the updated. Because I know it changes and because I know it's weather dependent, let's get an update from Stacy so we can bring it. If you could email that to me. CC me on the email and I'll get that back to the commissioners. And hopefully we all have a little bit of wiggle room so we can get everyone in attendance.
Perfect. I will.
So I appreciate you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Pretty much the same thing that most of you just said. I've attended the American Legion, the Mermaid Project. And I just want everybody to know that this will be the last night I wear my glasses. I don't want you to think I'm looking cool. I did have my eye surgery again yesterday. Both eyes are done. Now I'll be able to see everybody clearly, 2020 vision. So if you need your eyes done, I can tell you where to go because I'm very happy the way it turned out. Great meeting tonight. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. I have a few things. So on the mayor's call with Mayor Geller, we discussed offering some type of incentives to boost vaccinations. I'm not sure if the city wants to do something along those, those lines if, if the city manager and staff thinks that that would be a good opportunity to maybe partner maybe with some organizations or churches or just with the city and some of the businesses to be able to offer some type of incentives that businesses maybe can give them if they are going to get vaccinated. That was the biggest thing. I mean, they talked about COVID numbers and everything else, but I, I've been to many events and I've seen very few masks, including the Port Everglades, you know, Performance Engine Report that was held at Signature Graham with an excess of maybe over 300, 400 individuals. And I think me and one other person maybe had a mask on alongside with the servers. And so I do think that we're getting in a very comfortable space to not be, to be comfortable without having our masks on. And that is going to directly affect, I believe, our ability to come back in-person meetings. Because I know that all of us, you know, attend these events and all of us have times where we have our masks off or it's a personal choice. And I don't think there has been one time where, you know, we've been as a unit and someone has asked someone else to put the mask on and take it off, or if you've been vaccinated, all these other things. And we've been very social. And so I think we are moving forward. I think we are ready to go back into in-person. I know that the city manager is going to address some of those things within her report. And I'm excited to get back into person and to providing, providing those things. I, I want to congratulate Vice Mayor Beverly Williams of Lauderdale Lakes. She is the new president of the Broward League. I have been, I, I've had the pleasure to do the coffee with the mayor. And it is a delight. I know Tracy Calari did an amazing job and I'm looking forward to working closely with Beverly Williams. Avery Point's grand opening, I, I know that it's been open for quite some time, but I am happy to celebrate another business here in the city of Dania Beach in Avery being able to open. It was a really good time seeing Steward and all the other stakeholders that have really built Dania Point from the ground up. And I think it, it is a cause for continued celebrations when we're able, still during the pandemic, to be able to have low, a high occupancy rates and continue to have other businesses that are opening within our city. It definitely tells a tale of what we are doing here in our city and our, at our commission. And again, we had a great time at the Thousand Mermaids Project. Thank you again, Commissioner Otman, for, for such an amazing project. I think we should do some type of a contest with, with the mermaid tails or something like that to just get people to really get out there and take those selfies and bring more notoriety to the city of Dania Beach. Those are things that I, I do know that we need in this city, whether it's art or a different type of things, just to be a destination, a hashtag. This is the, this is the time of the hashtag with social media and how everyone is searching every single thing, millions of views. And to be able to boost our visibility, I think that we should offer some types of contests. I think that would, that would be an amazing opportunity. Yes, I, Candito, I see your hand up.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I just, I wanted to just clarify something towards the, the deployment. Commissioner Otman, the deployment will be in July. None of us will be participating. That's when the vote goes out there. When, when, when those volunteers that want to go in the water, that will be in August.
We were having something at the pier on the day that they were, we'll talk about it later, Candito.
But the deployment will be in July and we will be, we'll be watching it from the pier. And then in August is the actual going in the water. I'm sorry, Mayor.
You're fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. South Broward, Hollywood Hills, and McArthur had their drive-through parade celebration at the, well, formerly John U. Lloyd, now the Ula Johnson and Mizell Park this past Saturday at nine o'clock AM. And to have them all do a drive-through celebration and to have all of the staff and the teachers and the principals there taking photos of, of those kids who have survived an incredibly hard year with COVID, doing a hybrid approach of in-person learning and, and virtual learning. I know that the teachers, especially me, are really happy that tomorrow is the last day of school. That it's really been a challenging year. So I want to congratulate all the graduates, especially at South Broward. I had the opportunity to, opportunity to go and be at their graduation ceremony at the old Lockhart Stadium, where Principal Brown has done an amazing job. They have 100% of the class of 2021 that have satisfied their graduation requirements. And I think that is a phenomenal and awesome task to be able to, to meet. I, I've not seen that before. And so to have, during a pandemic, to have 100% of your class to be able to meet the requirements for graduation and to secure over $3 million in scholarships from Harvard, Stanford, to all these Ivy League colleges, I think that that is something that should be rewarded. I think that we should present them with some type of a presentation of appreciation and to just honor their hard work. Because we don't have a high school here in Dania Beach. And so we, all we have in our district is South Broward and Hollywood Hills High School. So kudos to them. I was invited to Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz's house this past, what was it, Sunday? I think it was Sunday. I know the Commissioner Llewellyn was there as well. It was Saturday. And it was a sisterhood circle brunch, one of many to comment. And it was very nice and intimate and a great, a great way to plant relationships with networking and to really be able to go and advocate with the Congresswoman some of the allocations that she's going to have with her appropriations budget on the floor. I know that we have, we had one project that was, that she was submitting, which was an infrastructure project. But recently we went and she is now going to submit the CW Thomas project funding. And I, I think that that is an amazing task that she is taking on. And I can only pray for the best because it will be better than us even having to go out for a loan if we can get federal funding for CW Thomas Park. So I want to thank staff for working with the Congresswoman and ensuring that she had the information necessary. And I definitely want to thank Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz for always being a big advocate of the little city of Dania Beach nestled in between so many other huge cities. I want to remind everyone that the Oaklawn Cemetery is this Thursday, the 10th, at 5:30 at the Westline Cemetery. I want to wish everyone a Happy Father's Day. And then I know that we spoke enough about Memorial Day, but we can never speak enough about those who have really sacrificed their lives for us. And I too cannot. The first day that the First Street, Northwest First Street Project was going on, all, all we saw was big trucks. We didn't know if it was from a development. Everyone was freaking out. And then in the next couple of days, the, the roads were almost undrivable. But we are seeing progress really quickly. And I know that it was something that we approved tonight to be, to be able to complete this project. So thanks, I want to thank the commissioning for continuing to move these things forward. I think it is very important and it, and it tells a lot about who we are and what our priorities are. And with that, my comments are complete. Now we are, we move on to appointments. Does anyone have any appointments? Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I would like to appoint Stacy Brown to the Marine Advisory Board.
Tom, Tom has our information, correct?
I've given it to him. He sent an email with it.
Yes, yes, I have it. Thank you.
Good. Vice Mayor? We can't hear you. I don't know what's happening. You're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Now we can.
Okay. If anybody has one for the Green Advisory Board, I had a resignation this week. So I was caught in the left guard. I haven't looked around, but if anybody has one, I'll take it.
I may have one. Let me look through my notes. I'll get back with you. If we don't have any other appointments, if we could please have a motion in a second to approve the appointment?
Motion to approve the appointment.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Not opposed. Administrative report, administrative report, city manager? Administrative appointment, administrative report, City Manager?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, members of the audience, residents, and our city team. I'm going to go out of order. I I need your support on a project that Ken Horn will be doing based on a directive from you all at the last meeting. It's it's the project understanding is a traffic calming study to assess traffic patterns and the magnitude of speeding traffic and potential traffic calming improvements along J. A. Ely Boulevard, Southwest Fourth Avenue, between Sterling Road and Sheridan. They will be performing five specific tasks for us, and the budget is $17,030. We're asking your support. And once this comes back, and I've discussed this with the mayor, discussing this earlier as well as Commissioner Llewellyn, we're going to propose to the city of Hollywood to, you know, possibly share in the expense of the design and construction based on what comes back from this report to see what we could do for traffic calming in that area as safety is a priority. We ask that this could come from your contingency, and if you approve it, it will still leave you a total of $138,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year, which is July, August, and September.
Do you have my support? I mean, looking for consensus of support. Does anyone have an issue with it?
No.
No issue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and and Commission. We will get moving with this immediately. On July the 13th, at the Commission meeting, we will be setting the mileage rate for the for the city, and Frank will be sending you all more information. On July the 20th, we will be submitting a draft budget to you all. We also have the the meeting of August 24th as a possible second budget workshop. And we wanted to see in your schedules any of the dates, August 9th, 10th, 11th, or 12th, as our possible first budget workshop. I wanted to stay away from July so everybody could have a longer break. And I I know we're very busy, but this is a very exciting budget. And we'll work around your schedules, but we believe that we should have a budget workshop. Yes, Mayor?
Is there a meeting on the 10th, or are we on vacation for the 10th?
Mayor, you are on vacation until the 24th, from July 13th to August 24th. We feel it's important to have one word budget workshop.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
That entire week is bad for me. And I think that's also the week of the League of Cities meeting.
We could do the we could do the week before. Again, Frank and I and the rest of the team will work around your schedule. So if you wanted to do the 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 week before, I'm sorry, I just dropped my pen. If you wanted to do the week before.
The week before is fine. I can I can work around things the week before.
Yes, the week before.
The week of August 2nd.
First week of August.
First week of August.
The next week is the League of Cities. I believe it's like the 11th through the 14th or something like that. Maybe the 10th or 11th through 14th.
That is correct. So if you want to do either Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, any of those days will walk around your schedule and and do like a four to eight or a five to nine budget workshop.
It would have to be in the afternoon for me. I mean, the evening for me.
Okay. Five to nine, Wednesday, the 4th.
Yeah, I can't do Wednesday.
Oh, you cannot Wednesday. I'm sorry.
All the other days I can do.
Okay. Monday, the 2nd, Tuesday, the 3rd, plus Tuesday, the 3rd of August.
That works.
Time for me. Tuesday, the 3rd of August, five to nine.
Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
Good, good.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, City Clerk, Finance Director, Tuesday, August the 3rd. Would you prefer a five to nine or 4:30 to 8:30? I'm sorry.
I would I would prefer a five, five o'clock.
Five to nine?
Yeah.
Would it go to four hours? Did it take four hours last year?
It may not, but it's a big budget. You know, you could always finish before, and you know, ask the attorney or the clerk because if we go a little longer and we haven't advertised it, if we if if we're done at eight, we're done at eight.
I I would just ask each person here to make sure they do their homework and they have their speaking points and get with staff and so we can hit these things and not prolong the situation and be there all night. So if you work with Frank and and the city manager, I'm sure they they could provide you with something that's going to be there before and that'll help us move it along.
I'm sorry, did you say August 3rd or are you talking about a different date?
No, August 3rd, Tuesday, from five to nine, but hopefully from five to eight.
Right. Okay, I just want to make sure it was still August 3rd we were talking about. Thank you.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, so we have August 3rd and August 24th if needed. Okay, so that's that. I I spoke to the mayor yesterday.
24th if needed, what what do you mean?
August 24th is our regular Commission meeting, but if we need any more budget, you know, workshop or any budget dialogue, you can have some time there if needed. Wanted to to put it out there. That's a regular.
During the meeting, because I think we're going to also have a CRA meeting that day too. Because we're not, you know what I mean?
We we may not need it because, like you say, if if everybody, you know, has the one-on-ones with us, which we highly recommend, and then we have that date on the 3rd, that from five to nine, but as an option, if you need a second, I'm not saying that we recommend it, but just in case. But you're right, that's a very busy meeting. So I I I think I will be able to get it all done in the workshop on on the 3rd.
Okay.
So I wanted to to get your support. I've been discussing this with with the team. I I met with the mayor yesterday, and we discussed this, to have our first live Commission meeting July the 13th, which will be our our first meeting in July. And if everybody's good, we're we're ready to go. We like to do some sound checks with you, and we'll be doing that with staff as well. But everybody's really excited to come back. So if you're good, we're good for the 13th.
Why are we still waiting through to July?
I was wait, I was going to say, why don't we just do, just come back for vacation the first week of vacation? But whatever the Commission wants to do, I'm good with either way.
The first week of vacation in in August, I'm sorry?
Yeah, when we came back for vacation, I was going to suggest that, but if you want to do it before, I'm okay with that, too.
I want to do it the next meeting.
We don't have to wear a mask, right?
No, we don't wear masks any. The team doesn't wear masks anywhere else. You you've been vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask, and they have the.
It's time to go back.
We can't hear you. Commissioner Llewellyn?
Said I'd be fine going back at the next meeting.
I can't hear you. I still can't, sorry.
Haven't moved anything. I am fine going back at the next meeting.
Okay.
We're ready. We're ready if you're ready. If if folks are vaccinated, you know, we, you know, people, you know, can take off their mask. If you're not, it's up to you. We have the partitions. We we created a very safe environment, so we'll be ready to go for the second meeting in June.
Awesome.
You're good? Okay, perfect. So that's out of the way. I I wanted to bring everybody up to speed. We were successful on on June 1st at 8:00 AM, as promised, was the official release of the RFP for the Dania Beach Grill. I want everybody to know that if you go to dania beach FL dot gov, and our homepage is right there, and you can get all the information on the bid posting. The bid opening is scheduled on July the 13th at 11:00 AM. It it's very, very exciting because we have two tracks. We're under a cone of silence, so but basically, this is just information. We have two tracks where people can bid on the grill on the same existing footprint for folks that would like to bid on on a, you know, maybe larger a grill to go story can actually extend the the pillars a little bit to the north opposite of where the Tidley Adler Park is. So we're we're very excited. I spoke to Ken last week, and he expects a really, really good turnout. So we're very excited about this. So again, the bid openings will be July the 13th. Very grateful to to your support and and that we have a procurement professional on board. So we'll be keeping you updated on on the bids and the bid openings and then coming to you for your approval of the proposal. As the mayor said, this Thursday on on June the 10th, we will be doing the ribbon cutting for the West Lawn Cemetery beautification project, and that will take place at 5:30. Also, on June 1st, the official hurricane season commence. We're we're ready to go. We we will proactively work in the city since back during the holidays of December and January, trimming trees and making sure that everything is ready to go. So we're hoping for the best, but always prepared for for the worst. We have our sandbags ready to go, and as you know, you all have participated, we have mastered the the art of drive-through sand giveaway. So every detail in regards to hurricane season is ready with all the departments. On June 3rd, again, we revealed the 1,000 Mermaid Artificial Reef Project at our beach, the Fishtail Mermaid, the selfie station, the Four Reef Module, two of the key pieces on land, and it's a preview of what's to come. And I I was discussing earlier today with Commissioner Otman that I I had a meeting with one of our residents. It was very emotional because this resident of ours had not had closure with one of their family members who had passed, and he's going to be moving forward with having two memorials, one in memory and one in honor. And just, you know, a resident that I had never met before, but there's there's been such a movement. And basically, he wasn't on social media, but he does go to the pier and he does go to the quarterback, and he he looked and he saw like a commotion, and he went down there and he said, "Manager, I don't know why I've been going to the pier lately, but now I know." And it was just a great conversation and very emotional moment. But thank you for all the unique things that all of you are doing here in the community. And I wanted to express the gratitude from from this resident to to all of you. In regards to the Nurse Northwest First Street Project, I I I met with the folks that are doing the work yesterday off-site. Very exciting. We've already done the milling of the road. We're finishing up the pavement. Tonight, you approved the RFP for the Crosswalk. This is going to be a tremendous project. At the next meeting, Frank will be giving you update on this unprecedented $45 million for our parks, including commencing with our two parks in in the CRA. So again, another great unprecedented amount of monies going into the city and the CRA. Very excited about working with Michael and and getting Dania After Dark up and running and everything that we could do in partnership with the CRA. We're very excited about that. The the stairwell at the beach crossing the dunes into the sand has been demolished to make way for a new structure post the fire arson that occurred. And this project will be completed by Monday, the 7th of of June. So that was yesterday. So we're very excited also about the next project that's scheduled to be completed on Friday, the 2nd of July, right before the holiday, and those are our restrooms. We are ready for summer camp, which will start on the 14th of June. The 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 park at Frost Park and the Lightstar Camp are at full capacity, and we still have some availability at PJ Millie and CW. We also have scholarships available, so please reach out to our parks director. We don't want to leave any child that wants to participate without being able to join our our camp. And last but not not least, we're very pleased to report that the unofficial numbers have been received by the Office of the Property or Fazer, and the percentage increased of 6.3% equates to approximately $1.4 million for our city. The official numbers will come in on the week of July, of course. There's usually not too much fluctuation with that. So, you know, we're we're moving forward with our fiscal year 22. Thankful to to Mayor James and Commissioner Llewellyn for attending the meeting with Debbie Wasserman Schultz. She's been amazing. And I I got to give a shout out to a federal lobbyist, Josh Gagatton. Every time he hears of an opportunity for money, he lets us know, and we start moving, meaning Colin and Fernando and Vencer and and Eric and and Candito and Frank. We want to maximize every and any opportunity for our city. And with that said, thank you for your support and thank you to our city team. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Nothing to add, Commissioner.
City Clerk?
Thank you. One upcoming meeting, Tuesday, June 22nd at 7:00 PM is your regular City Commission meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. And with that, good night, and we are adjourned.